We'll go ahead and start this board workshop for the proposed budget for fiscal year 2016-2017. Just for the record, it's 5:37. We apologize for the late start. But go ahead, Mr. Sanchez or Dr. Leo.
Mr. Sanchez.
Good evening, Mr. Fuentes, Dr. Leo, Mr. Lopez, Mr. Gonzalez. I left you a handout with the presentation. Compared to what we did in July, it's about the same information. There's only a few changes on what we have. But I'll go over on slide number two. ADA budget is based on a budget of 16,188. It's less than what we actually completed last year for ADA. It's 234 less, but we're being conservative just in case we lose ADA. If we have the same or higher, we'll have additional funds at the end of the year. On slide three, at the top, the first bullet, the budget is based on certified property values of $2,177,875,240. These are the values certified by the appraisal district on July 25th. So there is an increase of values of almost 120 million, about 5.8% compared to last year.
What was the total increase from the last expectation that we had?
From what we had last time. The values went up a little bit. And the actual amount taxable, I had set up 20 billion, 20 million as a reserve for appeals. Because that's what you would mention in the report. The actual amount that is still under appeals is only 8 million.
Okay.
So we're getting a little bit more property taxes because of the values. But we had, we had had more collections on delinquent taxes. So we're actually getting less amount of taxes and corresponded less stated. So it's about 200,000 less overall than net amount. We're using a 1.3397 tax rate, all MNO, no INS. The current tax collections are budgeted at 91%. We've been collecting about 93 and change. I don't know, I don't know the amount for July 31. I contacted the tax office before the end of the day today. They still didn't have a number. I don't have the report yet. But we're budgeted 91%. We should collect about 93 if everything continues the same way. Delinquent taxes for prior years, we budgeted 20% and we've been collecting 24, 25. We have a goal of 27. So we'll continue talking to the delinquent tax attorneys and the tax office on that. Workers' compensation was budgeted at 500,000. That are the budget for federal funds and local funds. Athletic insurance is budgeted at the same amount as last year for 15, 16. We expect from the surplus at the end of the year to set aside another half a million dollars to the undesigned and unassigned fund balance. We've been doing that for the last three years. So at the end of this year, we expect to have 17 million dollars as undesigned and unassigned fund balance.
Do you mean the, I mean, you put 2015, 2016. You do mean the end of this year?
At the end of the year, yes.
At the end of 16, 17?
No, 16, 17 and next year.
Another five.
15, 16, we want to add another half a million, yes. So when we start the 16, 17 year, we'll have 17 million already. The contribution to the health insurance, we increased it by 50 dollars per employee. It's approximately a million, 375,000 dollars the increase for that. On slide number four, we had mentioned to the board before that we got during the current year, 15, 16, 4.6 million dollars of additional funds within IFA and EDA related to the prior three years. 2012, 13, 2013, 14, 2014, 15. There was some adjustment that TA did and we were able to receive 4.6 million dollars. Because of this, we would only transfer to the debt service fund half a million dollars for the payment of bonds. When we did the TA reelection back in 2011, we said that we'll transfer money from the local funds to the debt service fund to pay the bonds. This is because of the additional funds received from TA, who will only transfer half a million dollars. And because of that, there will be 4 million dollars transferred to the construction fund for facilities as, that the board can use as a board decide later on. We have projected, we have right now 4 million dollars in the fund balance assigned for facilities for all the needs that can be used together with the 4 million mentioned before. And we have conservatively estimated that we'll get 4.5 million dollars of surplus in the general fund balance. It'll probably be more, but being conservative, we're counting on 4.5 million. All these together will bring us to 12.5 million dollars of facilities for fund balance assigned to facilities for all the needs that we can use at the board decide later on.
That's conservatively. What do you, what do you expect?
Maybe another million more. But in two weeks, when we have the final amended budget, we'll tell you better information.
10 million?
No, no, 5.5.
Total?
But another million, maybe a little bit more.
Okay, but you said you were going to say four and you had four.
4.5, so maybe four, five and a half or six. I don't want to tell you more.
He's saying combined.
Combined?
Overall, yes, would be about 13 and a half to 14 altogether at the end of the year. For facilities for all the needs.
Okay. So it's better than 10?
Okay. On slide number five, we had, last time we had mentioned to the board paying taxes for staff. There were preliminary and we haven't set up the budget, set aside, established like that. You have a budget for pay raises of teachers, librarians, campus technology coordinators of 500 dollars. Administrators 1% of midpoint, paraprofessional staff at 3% of midpoint. The total for, the gross total for this amount of pay raises is 1.5 million dollars. If the board went to consider a million, I mean, a thousand dollars for teachers, campus technology coordinators and librarians, and administrators 2%, paraprofessional staff 4% of midpoint, the amount would be 2.5, the gross increase, which is about a million dollars more than we had mentioned before. There's another slide later on that has a smaller increase or a decrease, so the board can have numbers to decide with. The budget reflects an amount allocated to campuses that is not used for payroll, utilities, maintenance, custodial, energy management needs. Elementary schools get 120 dollars for ADA, middle schools 135, and high schools 200. And we have some workshops included in the presentation below. No other district in the valley that we know allocates, well, not that many districts, only two allocate amounts like this to their schools. We have included the survey that we had mentioned before from region one on pay raises. There's only an addition on PHJA and that is listed below.
Mr. Sanchez, if I may just add the reference to the survey from region one on pay raises. That is included. In addition, I believe it was Mr. Gonzalez who previously had asked for figures related to how we compare to other districts.
Correct.
Neighbored districts. And we do have that information as well. We'll just add it to your packet.
Okay.
So that you can see where we stand without, before you make a final decision about pay raises. And this comes from TASB. One is region, the comparison to the region, one is to the state, and they are headed as such. I'm sorry, continue.
On slide number seven, we have included in the budget already security banks for the schools, for the main door of the schools, totaling 45,000 dollars. We had talked about surveillance cameras of special education classrooms in the event they are requested. But we estimated it would cost us 125,000 dollars for that. And that amount, we can get it from the fund balance assigned for facilities for all the needs. That is not included in the budget. There's a list of facility projects that require construction, the renovation, that we had discussed with the board. Later on, we can have a facility workshop to, for the board to rank the needs for the facility and the use of the funds we have available. So we can discuss that later on. At the bottom of the page, there's facility projects that might be needed within the next six to 18 months. And they are not included in the budget. That is a trophy installation for Lucky Stadium. It's an estimate of half a million dollars for the cost of that. A sound system for Lucky Stadium, we estimated it would cost us 120,000. Bobby Lucky Stadium scoreboard, a replacement would cost us about 1.2 million dollars. And a digital billboard next to Lucky Stadium of 330,000. The total for these needs is 2,150,000 dollars and they are not included in the budget. Slide number eight is campus's basic allocation that I had mentioned before, the amount that the campuses are getting separate from payroll, utilities, and all the needs that we have. The next slide is the same information but related to the bands for both high schools and the corresponding middle schools. There's an amount that they also get for, for the needs. Slide 10 talks about the ADA that we have for the last six years and what we projected for the current year. For 15, 16, I had mentioned we had 16,334 ADA. We're only basing the budget on 16,100. The next slide is student pick enrollment for the past six years. For 15, 16, our pick enrollment was 17,930. We expect 18,300 for the coming year. The tax rate for the last six years has been the same, 1.3397, and we're proposing the same. The next slide. This is a summary of the budget. At the end of the budget, what we have allocated for the different funds and the general fund, we have a surplus of 1,162,559 that hasn't been allocated. This amount could be used by the board for facilities, additional pay raises, or all the needs we might have. But right now it's 1.1, 1,162,000 dollars. That hasn't been allocated to anything.
Does, this doesn't include any of the teacher raises or any of the pay raises?
Only at 500,000, at 500 dollars. So if we increase it, there's some money to increase it from here, offer facilities or all the needs the board.
So we could, we could use some of this money if we decided to increase beyond the 500 dollars?
Yes.
So that, you had 1,544 based on your initial.
Yes.
Projection. So that extra million that we're looking at possibly come from that?
Yes, sir.
And then you're going to get more money when the ADA is higher than?
If the ADA is higher, we're more wanting for the budget. We don't have anything allocated and we haven't discussed anything about additional compensation.
That's what happened this year, right?
Excuse me?
That's what happened this year, that we had more, more students?
We had, yes. But we had budgeted in a very low ADA. We have budgeted 15,800. So we raised 300 at this time.
Right.
If we get more, we get more funds, but we did not, have not allocated anything for the additional compensation.
For every hundred students, how much money do you get extra?
For every ADA, about 7,500, conservative.
For every or for?
For per ADA, for the student that comes to school.
So we have 100, that's 700,000 dollars?
Yes.
200, 1.5 million.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
The next slide shows pay raises on column C right here. This is the amount that we have included in the budget. 500 dollars for teachers, librarians, campus technology coordinators, and athletic trainers. 1% for professionals, 3% for clerical technical trades staff, and 3% for manual trades. If the board wants to do a decrease, to go to 300 only, half a percent, 3%, the budget would decrease by 311,000. If the board wants to increase it, let's say to 750 as column B, 1 and 1/2% for professionals, keep it, technical trades and manual trades at 3%, there'll be an increase of 368,000. If the board wants to go with column A, 1,000 for teachers and librarians, anybody with the allocation they have. 2% for professional staff, 4% for technical trades, and 4% for manual trades, the increase will be about a million dollars. So this is additional guidance so the board can have a better figure on which increase to approve or to allocate.
Can you stop for just one second?
Sure.
Mike, what's the, the amount that we're going to allocate to our staff on insurance? A year? Is that every employee?
Yes, sir. It's 430 per employee per month, so it comes out to about 1.3 million.
That increase from what last year?
380.
380?
It increased 1.3 million dollars.
No, no, what are they going to absorb?
Per employee?
Oh, what are the employees?
How much are they going to pay?
Nine dollars a month.
Nine dollars a month, so. 108?
Any questions on this slide? The next slide shows. The total budget is 163,3234,727. And this is the amount for each fund listed here. Last year was 159,840,741. So there is an increase in the budget of 3,393,986. And the same budget listed by function is here. Instructional, instructional resource media, 13, start development, all of them going down. This is the amount, 163,234,727. Is the increase or decrease by function?
Why is the gifted and talented going down?
I don't have gifted and talented. Which one are you looking at?
161?
Which one?
Fund 161 or function 161?
Oh, no, that's a fund.
That's the general fund by fund category.
161 is a fund for state gifted and talented.
Right, so.
Based on the ADA that we have.
So it's an ADA function?
Yes, it's based on ADA. This is by function, and this is the present amount per campus without payroll. Who, this is too big. I think I might complete it here. But this is the amount for all, all the schools and departments, they're listed. And the, the amount doesn't include payroll, that's why it is less.
Anyone have any questions for Andres?
Andres, on your general fund?
Yes, sir.
You show an increase of almost 3.4 compared to last year?
Yes, sir.
Why is there a big increase for food services of 1.3 million?
They have a additional program that we, we're doing, that we're getting money from the state to do it. And we're using a budget, more equipment out of the fund balance they have that we need to spend.
So is the fund balance, their fund balance? Where you put in the additional money?
The fund balance that we have that I always mention that not includes food service. Because that one cannot be used for anything other than food service.
It can be used for anything but, but food service, you said?
Yes, sir. Only for food service. So they, they have more ideas that they have to buy food and other than consumable items that they have to use for the programs and more equipment that they're going to buy.
I just don't, don't think you have enough in instruction in 11. That's a very small increase for your instruction. What was the increase last year?
I don't remember. I can provide.
Can you put it on the update?
Sure. Any other questions?
Andres, what's instructional related? 142,000 less?
That's the librarians, related to the library, libraries, librarians, all the expenses they have.
Okay.
What are the additional revenues from TA comparing last year to this year with your template, when you do your formula? What was the increase?
I did not bring that report.
When you get your, your tax, your values, your ADA increase?
It was like 3 million dollars.
More?
Close to 3 million dollars between, oh, between taxes and the state funds. About 3 million dollars. State and taxes.
Did you calculate your values, the increases?
Yes, sir, yes. The net amount on current taxes, we're getting a little bit more because the values went up. But because we had more tax collections this year on the prior year taxes, we're going to have less money available for collections of prior year taxes. So we're losing about 120,000 in taxes overall compared to the amount I had given with the preliminary values. About 180,000 on property tax and 120,000 in state values, state amount because of the net decrease that we're going to have. I'll, I'll provide in the update, I'll provide it for the next, when we present the budget report, show that amount. Yeah, this is the survey that I had shown last time from region one, that the amount that they did for pay raises. The only one that went up was PHJA. They haven't finally approved it, but they gave us that the amount they're considering is 2.5% for classified manual trades, technical trades staff. 1,000 for teachers plus their performance pay, and 2% for administrators. There's several districts that are not giving a raise. La Clazara, Los Fresnos, San Benito, and United IUD.
And in relation to raises, if you look at the data submitted from TASB through Ms. Segura's office, beginning teachers, when looking at the, the market for salaries of teachers in the region, Westlaco ISD is at 109.4%. And in the state, compared to all teachers pay in the state, we are at 95.7% in that range. So the district compared to others and what they may or may not be doing in terms of pay raises, I think the district definitely is in good standing at this point.
Any other questions from the board?
Is there anything else that we have for Andres?
From MNO, MNO to INS, since you have a zero, what is your fund balance?
We're only transferring half a million dollars.
What's your fund balance right now?
On INS, about 5 million dollars.
5 million dollars.
Because we got extra money from the state for IFA and EDA.
So for this year, you're going to transfer less amount?
Only, only half a million dollars to make sure we have a little buffer for next year. So next year we'll have to transfer about 4 million or something like that. Depending on how the refunding God that we're planning on doing, 2,008 banks will save some interest.
It was never the intent four years ago to have a zero in INS. It was supposed to be moved up every year, a penny, two pennies. So to break even in INS, what, what should be the tax rate for INS, just to break even? Have you calculated that?
When you say break even, means to pay it out, the debt service fund, not with our transfers. It'd be close to the amount we had before. We had almost 10 cents somewhere in there to pay the, well.
Well, with the refund.
Maybe 9% because of the refunding. I, I can calculate it in, I can let you know through the update.
Because it was never the intent to be at zero. You were going to raise it up every year.
I just thought we were, when we transferred that rate, that it developed more revenue for us.
It does. We get more money from the state through the MNO. That's why we say we'll keep the difference.
But you're still moving some money.
And move money, we've been doing it every year. But this year, because we got extra money from TA for the prior three years, based on the calculation they did.
How many districts have zero on INS? Just us?
I don't know. I don't know. Some district did it temporarily for just a year or two, but we kept it. Because we're getting more money from the state and it was legal and valid and we're taking advantage of it.
What's your standard fund balance?
Standard?
I mean, what should, what does the state say should be required fund balance?
Between two to three months.
Of INS?
No, INS, no, you just need to have enough to pay your debt. If you don't have it, transfer it from somewhere else.
Right, so if we're saying that, you're, you're going to cover that with the 500,000 dollars. What is, what exactly are, are you wanting to?
That it shouldn't be a zero. It should be eventually to cover, to pay for itself.
Yeah, it could, it could, well, it could either increase the tax rate, it could be increased.
I didn't see your values here. Do you have the values? Maybe I just missed them. How was the increase in values from last year to this?
5.8%.
How much?
5.8%.
I believe that's on page three, yes. The second bullet.
Okay. Yeah, it came in late. I didn't see it.
It went up, oh, 120,000 the increase compared to last year, 5.8%.
Mikey, did you move more money into insurance? I'm sure it's going to take more this year than last year.
You said 50 dollars, didn't you? What was that?
Yes, sir. We increased the district allocation by 50 dollars per employee. So what we're funding, just the district alone, is roughly around 14 million dollars total.
Okay.
Towards the plan.
Did you have to transfer some more money this year or did you have enough?
We may have to. We're, we've got one more month left to go, which is August. So I do have a report that I'm trying to pull up on my computer right now, but we might have to move a little bit of money. But it, I don't want to give you a number right now, but it shouldn't be more than half a million dollars.
And that's in anticipation of some of these catastrophic cases moving off our books, correct?
That's correct.
Let's look at your pay raise in 500. I mean, we've been, every year, this is the first year we give this small amount.
I, I think we did last year, Doc?
500?
I think that's what we did, and then we had that other 500 dollars at the end.
No.
Or was it 1,000?
We had it at 1,000 last year.
1,000 and 500?
We used to have 1,600.
It's been the lowest.
As a standard.
Kind of look at your budget. I'd like to see, you know, with the board discussion, I'd like to see the 1,000, at least the 1,000.
We, we have, I had shown a.
It's there.
Yeah, a million dollars. That's what I'm saying. You can kind of work it out.
Yeah.
And I would like to have, if I may, some guidance from the board, whether you'd like to go with the 1,000, keep it at 500 or lower?
I'd like to go 1,000.
Or in between.
I'd like to go 1,000 also.
So that when we come back in two weeks to present the final budget, we can have the amount that we're going to use.
We're okay with that discussion? I mean, it's not a vote, but.
Right, I mean, what he's asking is just for some correction, so.
I think a thousand would be beneficial for.
Well, he gave you a schedule, and one of the things that we asked him to do was to give us a, a different, different option. So if you look at those options and you refer to the option that you'd like for him to pursue, whether it's option A, right now I think it's under option C.
And C.
So if you could tell him which one you really want, whether it's A or B, that accommodates for the changes that you guys are requesting. So he's already prepared it. You guys just need to give him some direction on that.
Andres, last year was 1,000 plus the 500 for the.
Right. The 500 was because of the ADA increase.
Right.
So right now just 1,500 for teachers. Dr. Rivera was saying increase it to 1,000.
And it would be an increase.
Do you see the criteria on that?
It'd be an increase of a million dollars?
Million dollars more, yes, sir.
Which we have in that surplus that he was showing us.
And this million dollars is for all employees, including locally funded state or federally funded employees. The general fund will be less than the million dollars amount. And this is just the gross, we need to calculate the fringe benefits that go with it, like Medicare, workers' comp, unemployment taxes.
I think we're talking about option A.
Option A, right.
Option A.
And last year you were very conservative with your ADA. And again, you're, you're conservative but not overly conservative.
Yes.
But I still think you're going to have another, at least what we had last year. You know, which would give us another 200, 150 students, which would be another, another million dollars.
And one of the things that the board had emphasized since our ban, election fail, but to have more money for facilities, that's why we didn't want to do more money. We'd like to increase it to 1,000, if the board would like to do. But any extra ADA that we get, leave it for facilities that we can do instead of pay raises now.
I think you have some direction that option A is probably a better route.
Go with option A then, okay.
Andres, question?
Yes, sir.
On the general fund non-payroll, I saw that some of the schools or some of the areas got decreased. What was that based on?
On the schools, it's on the, some of it is on the ADA that we have.
Okay.
Since this is a general fund, this includes special ed, gate funds, state comp, GT, bilingual, they're all included there.
Oh, they're all included in it?
They're all included, so it's different funds.
Okay.
So they have less ADA, they get less allocation based on that.
Because I was looking at South Palm, and I know that this year was the biggest graduation class that they've had at one eighty-six? Okay, one fifty-seven, that's pretty close. So they have more students, so I saw that they had a decrease, and that's what I was asking. Also, I believe athletics coach had a decrease of over a hundred thousand, and I guess they're okay with that? I'm assuming?
You guys have said anything?
You're okay with that?
We are, we had, this year, we had budgeted an additional six hundred thousand to help with the purchase they do for next year.
Okay.
So they shouldn't need as much next year because of that increase they got this year. We did not put that extra money for next year.
Okay.
Ms. Penya, how does it look for our ELF Academy this coming year?
We're hoping for an increase, I got word from one of our centers that they went, they're going from twelve qualifying students to about twenty at one of the daycare centers. So the numbers look good, we'll probably peak, I'm hoping at three hundred and forty.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Andres or staff?
Andres, good overall job, means a lot of work in the here staff. Good job to all.
Thank you, Andres, if you could just follow up with those items that Dr. Rivera requested for that additional information, I think we're scheduled to have our budget meeting on the twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
It's in two weeks?
Yes.
All right, first day of school.
Yes, sir.
Good luck to you, Andres. We'll see you on the twenty-second. If something happens between now and then where we have to have another workshop, please let Dr. Leo know so that we can meet and give you more direction if something needs further guidance. With that, this is a workshop, is there anybody that would like to come up and say anything regarding the budget or any of the presentation that was prepared?
Javier Herrera, board member, Salao, good evening. Looking at the overall budget of twelve million, how much of that exactly is, because it says twelve million can be used for facilities or other? What is other and what is facilities? How much exactly is left for facilities?
Yeah, the amount of twelve million is the amount that, we already have four million. We have, we're going to transfer four million dollars to the construction fund. And we estimated four and a half million dollars surplus at the end of the year, which totals to the twelve million I was talking about. It could be used for facilities, if the board says, well, we need money for something else. Like more money for the health insurance, if we need to make a transfer, it could come from there.
I don't think it's earmarked for anything specific, Javi, I think it can cover any of our general fund expenses.
So basically, let's say there's just twelve million. And then, and I go back to, when we tried to pass the bond, it was over a hundred million dollars. Are any of the items that were mentioned in the bond, which were, I think, prioritized, mentioned here for the facilities that we're looking forward to take care of, like a few houses?
Of course.
And all the things that, because I didn't see some items.
I don't think that the detail is listed like it has been in other workshops. But when we've had facility needs, we've listed out all of the projects and the estimated cost for all of those. Now, you're right, since the bond didn't pass, we need to prioritize and see exactly how we want to move forward. So that twelve million isn't going to take us very far compared to that hundred million that we needed. So we'll have to see how it fits, because we can't do half a job. So we'll have to see exactly how we can do what the projects that we need to do, based on that priority list, and see what it can actually cover. If the number one need costs twenty million, we can't do it anyway. So we'll have to see what we can do and then see how we can maximize the use of that twelve million. However, there are other things like this health insurance that we're not really sure about yet because we haven't finalized numbers, that may eat into some of that twelve million dollars.
But are we going to say five million, ten million, you know, like what we're really in need in the facilities? We're behind in facilities. We were the innovators back about ten years ago. I think the last time we constructed something was when Mr. Rivera was at, so really we haven't done any construction. Twelve million, and then you use or add one or two million, it's not really. What are the board doing or this district doing to add revenues? Are we writing grants, are we, you know? What are the other alternatives for revenue to come into this district?
That I will defer.
I can tell you that, yes, in fact, we are writing grants, we are looking for grants. We are looking for alternative revenue. And in fact, this year we will have two grants new that we did not have before. I don't have the exact figures, but we have one in pre-kindergarten and one in after-school activities for children, for elementary schools. So we are constantly looking for that. We have worked with principals to help us in the recruitment and the registration enrollment of students new to the district. So the board has also supported changes in board policy to allow us to consider additional students who may want to attend our schools. There is a constant review and search of new monies to bring in.
Not only that, the ELF Academy last year brought in an extra amount of money, about an extra three hundred kids, if I'm not mistaken. So that brought in a generous amount of revenue for us as well. Some of this fund balance is because of that.
We're depending or we're hoping and we're, that the ADA increases, well, let's say it does. Well, look at our schools, I mean, they're, they're to full capacity right now. You know, yes, no, should we, you know? These students are walking in the lines like this when, you know? And you get in more students and no facilities, no additional facilities, it's kind of, you know? So that's why my concern is, where are we, what are we doing for the next couple of years to add these items that we wanted or that we needed when we were trying to pass the bond, you know? I think two or three million dollars, four or five million dollars, like you said, Mr. President, is not really even close to what we would need it, so.
Right, so different factors, I think, the lack of support on the bond was the first factor, and then there's been some transition. So because of that lack of continuity, I think once we get through this process of finding a new leader, we'll be better able to answer the long-term commitment.
And let's not forget that we are losing students to the idea. I mean, they, they're that confident that they build their own headquarters here in Westlaco and building more and more schools around us. So we got to kind of put that into perspective, how many students we are going to lose as opposing to, hey, we're going to get this much and hey, we're going to have a minute, you know, kind of look at that.
Absolutely.
And in all fairness, Mr. Rivera, the board recently asked and were given the exact figures of how many children have moved out of the district and what districts they are going to, because the state does provide us with that data. And so they did have an opportunity to review the numbers. And yes, there are a number of children going to that charter school, but the reality is that they go to other districts, neighboring districts as well. And so the board has been conscientious about that issue as well. And as I said, they asked for those numbers and were presented with them recently.
I want to say, Javi, that the last time that she showed us these numbers, we almost broke even with IDEA. Because whatever transferred out, we got the same transfers back in. So we really negated their influence in Westlaco last year.
And those numbers are available for public review, if you would like a copy of that, we can provide that for you as well.
To be a little bit more accurate.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Melva, you had something you wanted to say, Mel?
Yeah, Javi, just going back on your comment on that we need to look at what we're doing. We did try to pass that bond issue, and the school was going to gain like eighty million dollars of free money, plus seventy, to be conservative, seventy million dollars that we were not going to have to pay back. You know, the state was going to, because we're at the community that we have, we had an opportunity to gain that.
But let's not blame it on the bond.
We didn't get, well, you said, where are we going to get money? Where do you suggest, when you built the schools, when you were on the school board, it was through bond money. It was through bond money. It was through bond money, Javi, and ninety percent of the schools that are built are built with bond money. Smaller projects can be built, smaller projects.
The public spoke.
Yeah, no, and we understand. And now we're doing.
I was really thinking, wow, man, this, this and this, look at what everybody's got, and you know.
And now we're doing the best that we can with what we have. You know, Andres did a good job, and he's got us some monies that we're going to do some projects. This board is going to get together, and we're going to prioritize the projects, get the biggest bang for our buck for the kids.
And I think I, just to interject, I mentioned about the band right now, with the, having a little situation where no money was allocated for the San Antonio trip for the band. And the band, I'm really here because my little girl told me, Dad, we're not going to San Antonio, why, there's no money. So I think there was a mishap or some kind of something, an oversight that probably.
I think you're misinformed on that, Mr. Rivera. I think you're misinformed.
But either way, I don't know that this is a conversation for this, however, we'll get with the superintendent.
But, well, let me finish. Because we got a new band director, he's coming in without a percussion instructor, and he would rather have the percussion instructor than the monies to go, because he needs the percussion. And we all know what happens with consultants, so, you know, that's another teacher position. So that's about another forty-two, forty-eight, you know? And he really needs it, I mean, he can't, it's hard for him to operate without one. And plus, that trip is about twenty million, I mean, twenty thousand dollars. So it's seven buses and a bunch of people and all that, so.
And I think the band director can go through Mrs. Morales to request, if needed, you know, go through the principal and the principal that oversees that campus, and then decisions can be made depending on the budget. I understand where you're coming from, but, you know, we're here to help any way we can and.
And then basically, you know, that's the way you find out things, when you have your kids in school, Dad, this is going on, hey, what do you mean?
You know, and Javi, probably with that not having funds for the game, remember the schedule, they were probably following the schedule from the prior year.
Probably.
So when you budget, you budget on the prior year, not planning that you were going to have a game in San Antonio.
Right.
Once they created the new districts, that's when they started scheduling the games, so.
But he could use that instructional.
Okay.
Well, that's definitely something for Melva to take a note of, and Dr. Leo, make sure you follow up on that and see how we're going to fix that issue there at the high school. Thank you, Javi, for your comments, we appreciate it. Anything else for Andres?
Good job.
Thank you very much.
Good job, Andres.
Appreciate it, and again, we're sorry that we're a little late. That will conclude the workshop unless there's somebody else that has any comments. Okay, thank you very much. Does anybody need a break, or can we jump right into the?
We took a break.
You already took a break, Andy?
Yeah.
Before I take this, yeah, I was going to say, we're having a workshop, so we didn't have this public sign-up sheet ready. So if anybody wants to come and sign up for public comments, I'll give you a couple minutes to do that if you're here, unless I see no action. Public comments.